You guys make sure that you're good. Mike's around, okay. Meeting will come to order. This is the Cache County Council meeting, Tuesday, September 28th, and we welcome you here. If you haven't signed in up here with the clerk, there's a sign in paper, so please make sure you get your name on there, so we know that you are here. And we will begin this evening with an opening from Councilman Carl Ward.
Thank you, Gina. I thought it would be appropriate to just read the preamble of the Constitution, since there's a lot of, a lot of fur going around on both sides of any issue. We want, we want, it's unconstitutional, it's unconstitutional, but it's good if you sit down and really read what the Constitution says, but I'll, I won't read the whole Constitution. But the preamble says, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this Constitution for the United States of America." And that says very succinctly what, what our Constitution is all about. And I'd like to now offer a prayer for, in our meeting. Our Father in heaven, we come to thee this time as we meet as a county council, and give thanks for the blessings and the opportunities we have to be able to meet freely and to enjoy the freedoms that we have in this nation, especially the wonderful people and environment that we have in Cache County. We ask for thy blessings to be upon us as we meet today, that we might be guided by thy Spirit, and do those things which would be most beneficial for our county, for the people who abide here, now and in the long term. We ask for these blessings to be with us, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Will you join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. It's always a good reminder to think of our Constitution. Thank you for that great reminder. Okay, so, council, we need to re-review and approve the agenda. Do I have a motion, a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't oppose, but I'll abstain, because I've listened to you.
Oh, that's for the minutes, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So that was the agenda.
Agenda, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay.
Yeah, sorry.
You must have ESP, we're gonna do that next.
No.
Oh, it's okay. So, the agenda is approved, and next is approval of the minutes. Are there any changes to the minutes?
I move approval to the minutes as written.
Okay.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes as written. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
All abstain.
And any abstain, okay, two abstentions.
Three.
Three abstentions, okay. Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, next we'll move to item five, which is the report of our county executive, David Zuck. David?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of quick, quick items this evening. I just want to thank everybody who participated in our emergency drill for Emergency Operations Center last week. That was actually part of a four-day-long training that we were able to host here in our county. We had several of our cities participate, in addition to a lot of county staff throughout the four-day period, and we had trainers from FEMA come in and train us. So, our emergency manager did a great, great job setting that up, and I hope everybody learned a little bit about how we can do better next time there's an emergency. We also had another event happening here in the county last week. It was not a county-hosted event, but it was hosted in our county. It was the State Outdoor Recreation Summit, it was hosted at Utah State University, I think. It was a great opportunity to showcase what we have to offer when it comes to outdoor recreation. I don't have this quite ready yet, but just wanted to let you know, we're almost ready with the public defender, having somebody appointed to that position. So, I'll be able to report more to you at our next meeting. Also at the next meeting will be the recommendation from the Council of Governments. The Council of Governments, they're in the process, all of the mayors on the Cache County Council of Governments, all of the mayors are currently scoring the proposals from all of the applicants, and we should have a recommendation for you next time for your approval. And it, it looks pretty good. It looks like we will be able to fund everybody who applied this year, so there's, there's enough funding to do that. We took a, took a tour, John Luthy and I and a couple of staff members went out to Davenport Road, went for, went for a ride there and looked at the eastern half of Davenport Road, and as you're all aware, we've got some legal issues we're working on there, and I think it was helpful for our, our new county attorney to go out there, and I want to thank him for taking the time to go out and take a look at it. We also had USAC, I know, Madam Chair, you were there, and Carl was there for part of it. We had our USAC conference, or Utah State Association of County Councils and Commissions, but County Council first.
Yeah, I put it first too, but Commission is actually first. We change it.
Yeah, it was a great conference, good training for us to attend. We also had a really good brag meeting last week, and maybe Carl, when he gets to his report, wants to talk about that, since he serves as our Chair of our Bay River Association of Governments. But we had a great meeting with, with not only leaders from northern Utah, but southern Idaho, and talked about some shared issues such as economic development, transportation, travel and tourism. It was a really, really good meeting with our friends on the other side of the border. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention was just to give you an update on the suicide awareness concert that's happening this Thursday. It's exactly forty-eight hours from now is when we'll be kicking that off. And I wanted to thank the County Council for their support and stepping up and being willing to provide funding if necessary for that event. It looks like right now that we won't need that funding that you pledged. As of about an hour ago, we just had a, we just had a committee meeting, and I apologize for not being able to attend your workshop, but I was at that committee meeting. As of about an hour ago, we were at forty-one thousand dollars raised, and we actually in hand, forty-one thousand actually in hand, and we have pledges from others that we believe will take us to the full fifty thousand that was needed. So, that is excellent news, and I really want to thank the community for coming forward. I, when we first started, I started making a couple of phone calls, and I asked, I think, two local businesses to help, which they immediately did. One of them actually was, had already heard about it, was already considering. But I think every other one was spontaneous. They heard about the event, they called, they asked how they could help, and they provided. And there's one of our, I just looked up and saw, Wilson Motor Company, Chris Wilson, Senator Wilson is here. He's one of our sponsors who, who helped. Thank you, Chris. We, we just have such a great community, and so many people voluntarily stepped up and offered to help with it. So, the concert will be Thursday night, six o'clock. Alex Boyer will be performing as opening acts. We'll have four local bands as well, performing a couple of songs each. We'll have some, we'll have some educational informational presentations in between the songs and acts, and we'll have about two dozen exhibitor booths there with information from nonprofit organizations, counseling organizations, other groups like that. It's going to be a great event, so if you're able to attend, please come out. It'll be at the fairgrounds, it's a free concert, and I just want to, once again, thank you for your support. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much, Executive Zuck. And that's exciting to hear that we have so much community support for, for that suicide concert, and I think that's fantastic. Okay, we will move now to items of special interest, and the first item is an update on State Row Thirty, and that will come from David, Dave Adamson, and he's the UDOT Region One Project Manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
Give some additional comments. I think usually council will have one of those anyway.
Madam Chair, thank you once again, and council, for having me up here again. My name is Dave Adamson, I'm the Project Manager for the SR Thirty Project, UDOT employee. And just an update on where we're at and status of the project. I'm sure you've got questions, you know, everyone always does, so. On this right here, you have a fact sheet. The front is basically a fact sheet about the, the road in and of itself, with some brief detail. The other side is the SR Twenty-three intersection that we're moving forward with. Are there any questions with regard to the scope or context of the actual project? I've been up here before, and we've had discussions about timing or, or anything else. Do you have any questions? I don't, I mean, I don't want to read this to you, because I think you're all pretty familiar with, with the project.
We were hoping that the traffic content would be thick enough to have a four lane from top to bottom, has that happened?
No, that, that, that won't happen with this project.
Then come back, would you, when you get that?
Yeah.
I think, this, this sounds familiar, it's like.
That's really important.
We've had this conversation, um.
We've heard, we've heard this presentation enough times, that I don't know if there's anything else we need to hear.
Yeah, that's not, that's not possible at this point, as you well know.
We're saying please, too.
Might add a pretty this year.
Yeah, pretty please. See, that said pretty please, you might have got it, but you, you know, you forgot.
How many, how many more vehicles have we got to travel that road before we make the, make the grade?
I'm not quite sure what the number is, but.
It's gotta be close.
When we come out and do the count, maybe we'll tell you, and then you could get a posse out there to circle around and.
That's a good idea.
That count up there. It's happened before on streetlights, but, um, so, general information, we're hoping to advertise this project this fall/winter. We're still working with Pacific Core, there's a lot of moving parts with Pacific Core, and they're, they have other priorities right now. And so, we're hoping to get them cemented in and agree to, and all the right-of-way and everything we need to from them. If we're able to do that, we'll be able to advertise this winter, and then start next spring/summer. That's the only one wildcard. As I think I mentioned before, that the soils out here are really soft, and initially we, we hoped this be a two-year construction season, but it's probably gonna maybe be two and a half to three. And part of the reason is, is we have to let that soil sit for a long time to get the settlement out, and so, it may drag a little longer than we were hoping for, and you were probably hoping for, but, you know, we want a quality road at the end. Yes?
Let me ask you a question on that, because that is a major thoroughfare for a lot of people.
Yes.
What kind of restrictions to traffic should we anticipate? Do we need to anticipate figuring out some alternate routes for people to travel?
Good question, good question. For the most part, no. We'll, we'll keep two lanes, or one lane in each direction, travel on that road for ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. There will be a few, and we'll, we'll make sure we publicize, there will be a few times where we have to actually close it for a period of time to do some work, some box covert and some other types of work that we can't do without closing it down, and that'll probably be on weekends, and our public involvement people will, you know, spread the news, right? We'll, we'll make sure that everybody knows, hopefully everybody gets, gets word that that's the case, and they can make alternative. But for ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you'll be able to travel that road without too much restriction, as you do now, so. But yeah, we'll make sure that we communicate that when, when we do have those, those temporary closures. Another part, I'm not sure this was, when I came up here last time, it wasn't, we've kind of run into a road jam, or a roadblock with the railroad. I think maybe you guys are familiar with the, the situation with the railroad. The railroad wants, local entities and also UDOT to pay for the at-grade intersection maintenance, and right now, by state law, we can't do that, so we're kind of at a, at a standstill. So basically, the railroad told us that, and we almost had the agreement in place, it's, it's too bad, we almost had it in, in hand, they came back and said that the only intersection that they'll allow is an at-grade, or no, is a grade-separated intersection, or basically a bridge over the railroad, which is beyond the scope of this project. So, it's gonna be unfortunate, where we're gonna build this road now, wide out there, and then, as we get close to the railroad, eighty feet short of the railroad, we're basically gonna have to just stop, and then go the other side of our road and build it, SR Twenty-three, and build that intersection. So, it's gonna be unfortunate, because we're gonna have this nice big wide road that's gonna neck down at the railroad and then go back out. There's no other, we're kind of in an impasse right now, they're, they're not making a lot of progress, and it's, it's at levels way above me at the state, dealing with the railroad and, you know, and the agreements there. So, in the short term, as we build the road, we won't be able to build the railroad section, or the railroad section won't be improved, which is gonna be unfortunate. My hope is that the state can come together with the railroad, and we'll be able to change order that work into the project as we're constructing it. But if I were a betting man, I probably wouldn't bet that that would be resolved by then, but that's my hope. And so, that's unfortunate, but it's kind of beyond our control, beyond my control. And so, we'll have the road widened up to the railroad, but it's gonna neck down to one lane in each direction, basically what you have there now, crossing the railroad. So, it's unfortunate, and I think, if you've been familiar, where if, if the county has some crossings with the railroad, you probably have the same issues with, with them wanting to pay for, wanting the, you missed, you missed, sorry, municipality to pay for the maintenance of those, a grad, at, should bring water up here next time, at-grade intersections.
What's the solution to that? Do we need to go to our state legislators? Do we need to go to our federal legislators?
You could bring that up with them, it's, it's been elevated already, it's there already, it's, it's outside of my project.
At which level? The state, the federal? Who's, who needs to change the law to make us, make it so that we can get this project done?
All of them. Yeah, yeah. It wouldn't hurt to have pressure from, I mean, yes, state, federal, whatever it takes.
Is there somebody at UDOT who's the expert on this issue?
We have, we have someone that's, that's in charge of utility at a central level. I don't know who that is, they, they just came in, and I forgot their name. And they're, they're tasked with working with the railroad, but I think it may even be above his level at this point, because it goes to state, state law, as I understand, state law doesn't allow us to. And so, state law would have to change for us to pay for it, and we're resisting, we don't want to have to pay for the maintenance on all the at-grade intersections, as, as the local, you know, jurisdiction, whether it be the county or the cities that have an at-grade intersection. I know Logan has quite a few, I'm sure the county has some at-grade intersections.
So, this is gonna be quite an interesting road, correct?
Yeah.
We're gonna come from Tremont, and then we're gonna buzz all the way, and as soon as we hit the railroad, we'll go down to a, a two lane.
What we have basically now.
And then, we're gonna speed up just about a half a mile, and then we're gonna go back down to a two lane, until we get past the wetlands, and then we're gonna back to a four lane.
Basically, yes.
Quite a road. It actually really isn't gonna accomplish much, is it?
I, I think it will. I think having, even in the sections where you only have two lanes or one lane in each direction, with the full shoulders and the median, I think that's gonna improve safety considerably. So, I understand your concern, and it's a concern that I've heard a lot of as a project manager on this project, it's, it's beyond my ability to change the scope of what was dictated based on the environmental document, but I understand, and I do, there's a lot of people at the region that work for UDOT that live up here that were not happy with the, the results of, I guess that's too much inside baseball there, but.
I think the environmental study was way, 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 way too conservative, in my opinion.
Possibly so.
You can write them about any way you want, you can, just depending on how you want them to come out, so.
Yeah, so, but it, it will be an improvement, and, you know, and there are sections where, where we have one lane in each direction, there's not a lot of access on and off, and so, you know, the vehicles will move through there relatively quick, and so.
Well, you're completely aware, a roadman, that anytime you go from, from two lanes down to one lane, it backs things up pretty fast.
If you have, if you have enough traffic, yeah, it will.
There will be a lot of traffic there, and certain times of the day, it's gonna be really interesting to see that happen, and, you know, I'm not exactly sure the wisdom of what you're doing, but as my perspective, it's not very wise of what's taking place.
Yes.
You've heard me out, I won't say anymore.
It's all right, I, I, I fully under.
I promised you, I promised you two years ago that we'd have enough traffic coming through there, if you would just help us with the numbers a little bit. Apparently, it didn't, it didn't work.
Well, I fully understand your frustration with it, and, you know, I.
If we get some accidents out there, Dave, is that gonna change things? Because what I worry about, when you take two lanes and go to one, people drive crazy, and they try to beat the person, and I just anticipate that we're gonna have some crashes where those places are narrowing.
That's potential, the, the one thing that will help us is the full shoulders, the full twelve-foot shoulders, you know, if that were to happen, you actually still have an unofficial lane out there, so, it's not like you get run off the road, but, so.
Well, then you need a January, February fog along there in the morning, and that'll really be fun.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Sometimes I wonder how many deaths you gotta have in these places before the state finally takes that serious. You know, I'm out there on eighty-nine ninety-one College Ward, where they have deaths handful every year, and it's been taking them ten years to even get anywhere on that. And like I told them the last time, it looks like we got another, we got another fatality on the road. Motorcycle come along there, and a car pulled out, smack 'em. Anyway, do your best.
Yeah. Any other questions with regard, I want to talk, last time I came up here, we talked about certain types of intersections at SR Twenty-three. Any other questions generally about the project or the scope? The backside has the SR Twenty-three, we, when we presented last time, we presented the R-Cut intersection, which basically, as you recall, it stopped through movements on Twenty-three and made you go up and do a U-turn. We got a lot of feedback back, and from the feedback we got back, and also senior leadership, we were, basically made the decision not to do that. This is an improved intersection of what we have, this is basically an at-grade intersection, but with the free rights and some of the other stuff that we have coming in there, this will be improvements. We also are putting some, some lighting, some basically warning lighting, so when cars come to Twenty-three, they'll, though the people on, the cars on Thirty will be notified that there's someone at the intersection, so they'll be warned that there's, you know, potential for conflict. But this is what's, what we're going with now, so. Any, I know that we, we came up and had a long discussion on the R-Cut, any, any other questions on that, or?
I like this better, so.
And we'll have full lighting on this, we'll have full lighting on this intersection too, which will help. You know, you, you can only do so much for fog, and I know this area gets fog, you know, you just, there's so much, only so much mitigation you can do with fog, but that will help to some level. So, we'll have full lighting on this intersection also, and there is a pedestrian bike underpass on this also that's been, will be placed there, so they can pass north to south on Twenty-three without having a conflict with the vehicles.
So, as the lane comes from four to two at these spots we talked about, will there also be warning lights?
No, there'll be, there'll be signs, and there'll be general transitions, they won't be abrupt, it'll, you know, it'll go.
But if you're unfamiliar with that, I mean, driving that, that's gonna be a less.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be signs, and there'll be striping, and it'll, you know, it'll be, you'll see that it's, it's coming from two to one, and back to two. And I guess that's not the issue, going back to two, but the two to one.
I'm sure you drive, you drive I-15 every day.
Mm-hmm.
Where you live, but you have to, and you know as well as everyone else in this, this room, that when there's an accident on it, you, you come from four lanes down to two lanes, or.
Yeah.
Two lanes down to one, it'll back up three miles.
Yeah.
Especially during that busy time of the year, or the busy time of, of the work, the work rotation.
Yeah.
It's not gonna be anything different out there, but, you know, I question the wisdom of allowing environmental studies to override common sense, and that's probably the best way to put it.
Well, the one, the one safety, you know, and it, even when you have an accident on the shoulders, people still slow down, but with those full shoulders, that'll, you know, if there were to be an accident, you know, you, you'll just pull off the side. Granted, traffic still will, still will slow down, and gawk at that, but still, it allows, right now, currently, if you had an accident on that road, you're basically shut that railroad right down, because there's just no, hardly any shoulder at all. So, there will be some improved safety there and mobility, hopefully during, during when there is an accident, hopefully there's not very many of those, but, you know, there, that's, you're always gonna have accidents on roads, right?
Well, I guess we could, we could asphalt the shoulder and just have it the shoulder and blind it.
Well, the shoulder will be asphalted too, that.
That's what I'm saying, we just.
We got, you got twelve, full twelve feet of shoulder there, so that is asphalt, so.
We found our other lane, didn't we?
Yep.
There you go, the unofficial lane.
When I heard what they said in that, it actually built the road to the way it should be, it's just that they can't justify it, you know, until they get more traffic on it and things like that, so. You guys are a lot smarter, and I want to give you credit.
Yeah, I don't know about that, but.
I know the thoughts and philosophy about all of this is not as necessary as making it pretty, but we need an alternative, quicker, more functional access to I-15 than through Sardine Canyon.
Yes.
We've learned this past winter, Sardine Canyon.
Oh.
How many times it was shut down, and people were killed up through there, and we had a light winter. And if we had an access, just a better road, better access all the way to I-15, just to come in and out of here, I think that, that's really was, I think the purpose of that Valley View Highway really needs to be for this valley, for the other valleys to come here, we need to look at that a little more serious.
Valley View Highway, is that something different from SR? I guess I'm not familiar with that.
That's the local.
We've always called about.
Oh, okay, that's our third, okay.
That's the local.
That's the local. I should have heard that before now, so, I apologize, it.
It's the pretty way of saying SR.
SR Thirty, okay. You know, I, I've got history with, I went to school up here a long time ago, up Utah State, and my wife, newly married, and she was a mother's, you know, I guess I'm saying too much personally here, but she had to come down and see her mother every week, because she was a mama's daughter, right? I mean, and I remember her during some pretty good snowstorm, still going south to see her mother when she went down, but I remember she'd have to go over Thirty a couple times in SR, when Sardine was closed down, so, I'm familiar with Sardine Canyon. Luckily, Sardine, with the, the barrier we've put in there, I think that's made that a lot safer, but there's only so much you can do when you have high mountain paths with winds and a lot of snow, you know, that's just, that, you know, you're, you're gonna have situations there, you just can't engineer around, so.
Any, any other questions? Dave, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, and if you have any other questions, please feel free to contact us, or if we have more discussions, so, thank you very much.
Very much. Okay, it's five-thirty PM, and we have a public hearing set for five-thirty, so we're gonna skip over those other agenda items temporarily, and we'll come back to them, but we need to move to our public hearing on Ordnance Twenty-Twenty-One dash Twenty-One, Amendments to Title Seventeen to Allow a Winery. This is an ordinance amending the county land use code as required by the adoption of Ordnance Twenty-Twenty-One dash Five, creating a new use type for agriculture-related alcohol products and sales. Chris, can you give us a slight, a short presentation on that before we open it up for comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can give a quick, short presentation, I probably have a longer one. You want the long one later for questions?
Yeah.
Okay. A quick update on this, this land use update, Title Seventeen. Back in April, the council adopted Ordnance Twenty-Twenty-One dash O-Five, which allowed alcohol production in the county, with a stipulation that there is a land use piece that was adopted that could accommodate that use, and that there was a fee structure put in place. Now, I don't, didn't deal with the fee structure, but I did work with the planning commission on the land use piece. So, we took some questions that the council kind of used as guidelines for the commission to say, here's what we're thinking, please address these specific questions, and so the commission took those questions and read through those, agreed with the direction of the council, and also agreed with the focus on winery as a separate use-related definition, instead of tying it into agritourism. So, they moved those pieces forward, and over the next four months, the team and also did some site visits, worked with a specific consultant that the, an interested party put forward to come up with something that might be a solution, again, considering the input from the council, the input from the site visit, and our discussions with the attorney's office and with the commission, to come up with what you have before you as a recommendation. So, there are three sections of code, well, two sections really, but three portions that are, would be amended. One is the specific amendment that would add wineries a use-related definition with the specifics there. The second piece is adding winery to the seventeen oh nine use-related definition, or, I'm sorry, Schedule of Zoning Uses chart, which would identify where that use could occur, which zones it could occur in. And the third piece was a minor amendment to the agritourism definition, excuse me, to clarify the distinction between this use, small-scale slaughter facility, and the agritourism definition. Those were the primary changes that were instituted there. There's more that we can go into later as part of that discussion, and I'm happy to address that at that time, but if there's more questions, I'm happy to address those.
Okay. Well, we'll open it up for public comment. Because we do have this later on the agenda as a discussion item from council. So, if there's anyone here that would like to give input or make comments about this ordinance, if you'd like to come to the microphone here and give us your name and then give us your comments. We're only taking comments on, on this winery ordinance. We're not taking comments on any other things that are on the agenda tonight, just this. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on this? Oh, there's a couple.
So my name's Jeff Barnes. I'm in Smithfield. And I would like the council to seriously consider adding winery to this. Is it an ordinance or? Okay. This land in question, the Mickles land, is in our annexation boundary between Smithfield and Hyde Park. So eventually, down the road, this land will probably, more than likely, be annexed into the city of Smithfield. And, you know, open space, green space, agriculture. The more our towns are developed and more houses go up, we would like to see some agricultural land maintained. And this is one way it can be. And, uh, Smithfield City, I think, would look positive towards a winery. And the growing of grapes. I don't know if this is part of your ordinance, but allowing a winery to buy grapes outside of the valley is a definite positive plus for this owning and operating a winery, but, 'cause you never know weather-wise, what'll happen to your grapes that you're growing, so. That's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. I believe the ordinance is fifty-one percent has to be grown in the valley. Am I remembering correctly?
Hello, my name is Shalali Hugo. I live in Logan. Um, I support having the possibility of wineries in the valley. It adds diversification of agriculture, brings tourism and jobs to our valley, which is good for our economy. And we need to live in the present and look towards the future in all of those ways instead of living in the past. So I support having a winery in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Mickel. I just wanted to thank the council and the planning and zoning group. They, if the same ordinance that I've read last is what is available, I think they did a stellar job and they've given us an ordinance that at least gives us a path to get started. I'm sure in the future we'll tweak it a little bit here and there, but I think this is a good starting point and they worked very hard on it. And I do appreciate everybody's efforts. It was not fun, so.
Thank you, Keith. Is there anyone else?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries and we have closed the public hearing. And we'll talk more about this later on the agenda. For now, we're gonna move back to six items of special interest. And we have a drought status report from Nathan Dogs, the Cache Water District Manager. Nathan, thanks for being here. Hopefully, you've got some good news for us.
I asked Mayor Barnes if he was gonna do the rain dance for us. Thanks for having me come, Madam Chair. Happy to come give a report anytime I can. Unfortunately, the, the news isn't great, so this is the, the latest drought update. The state sends this out every week, so this is a week old. We'll get a new one tomorrow. But just to give you a little background, we started the year twenty-twenty in January with fifty-six percent of the state was in a moderate drought, so really not that critical. We started twenty-twenty-one with ninety-eight percent of the state in extreme drought. And we've talked, I think, when I was here a couple months ago, why that was, you know, low, low fall precip, really low soil moisture, and then, and then last winter wasn't, wasn't good to us. Cache County really fared pretty well for, for the snowpack we had. We're, we're mostly driven off stream flow. We don't have a reservoir up our canyon to rely on, but most of the, the ag users did pretty good delivering their water. But the quick, big question is, is, is what do we do if, if next year is like this or even worse? And so just as a side note, next Wednesday, six PM at the Cache Event Center, we're having a, a Cache Valley Water Users Meeting, where we've invited as many of the canal companies as, as we can contact to just come. We've got a number of presentations there of, of funding options and some different things, water outlook from, from NRCS. And then, and then kind of to plan for, what do we do if, if next year looks like this or, or even worse? So if, if any of you want to attend, we'd, we'd be glad to have you. But I'll just give a couple updates of, of where we are in the state right now. Of, of the state's largest reservoirs, fifty percent, well, so of the forty-two, fifty-five percent of them are below fifty percent capacity, which, which going into this time of year is fairly uncommon. Usually, we don't use that much reservoir storage. Most of the reservoirs in the state are, are managed to stay in the upper twenty-five percent. I mean, our, our two small ones in Cache Valley, they're kind of drained down every year. But the bigger ones in the state are, really have multiple-year storage in them. But a lot of them are, are below fifty percent and many of them below twenty-five percent. And so if, if those areas don't get that snowpack, next year's gonna be a dire, you know, year for those. Ninety-eight percent of, of the state's measured streams are below their normal flow for this time of year. You know, twelve reservoirs have ramp closures. You know, we have one here in, in Cache Valley. Hyrum Reservoir's been closed for a number of weeks because of, of low water. Statewide, we're, we're at seventy-five percent of normal precipitation for the snow year, which it ends in two days, so I don't think that number is gonna go up. There's no real storms across the state planned in the next two days. So we're gonna start the year off next year to another big deficit to try to make up. And, and to kind of make it worse, you know, it's been a really warm fall, so we're losing more water through evaporation. You know, a lot of guys are still irrigating their, their pastures. Most of the, the hay crops and, and stuff are done, but they're still irrigating, so we're still using water. The, the one bright note in it all is, is soil moisture statewide is, is eight, eight and a half percent above normal for this time of year. That, that will be our only saving grace is, is the rains we've received over the last month to six weeks, depending on where you are in the state, have, have saturated the soils pretty well. They're back on their way down, so if we don't get some, some storms in the next week or two, they'll get back, back below where we want them to be. We want those as high as possible when the snow comes, and so in the spring, when the snow melts, it runs off in the streams and doesn't just, just soak in the soil. And there, there are twelve streams in the state right now that are at their record low they've ever been, and one of those is our biggest stream that comes out of our mountains close here in the Logan River. So it's the lowest it's ever been recorded this time. We met, you know, this summer, the water users had to decide how to split that up. If we don't get a good snowpack, our streams next year, you know, there's a chance they could go dry higher than they did this year. I mean, all of them went dry at one point somewhere at a diversion in the valley, but we don't really have a backup, and so that's why I asked the mayor to do his, his rain dance, because if we don't get a good snowpack next year for us is gonna be pretty, a pretty tough year to get through. And it will be for the whole state. And then, just as a side note, we, there, there are still a couple people that, that their wells are continuing to go dry, wells that have never, never quit flowing. I got another call about ten days ago of another one. And so the, the groundwater is still dropping as well. I'm hoping in the next week or two, as the bigger irrigation pumps now have started to shut off and the cities are using less, those come back. But if not, I think that the state will see a number of new well applications to either deepen a well or drill new wells to accommodate those. Right now, it's, most of them are running a hose from their neighbor, some of them hundreds of feet to try to get water in, in hopes that those wells come back. 'Cause most of them are older wells and they're, they're pretty hard to retrofit with a pump. So that's a quick overview. The only bright spot is our soil moisture is good. But the outlook, you know, the, the next thirty-day outlook doesn't look good for, for storms, and so we need a big, big shift in the weather pattern to, to change for, for next year. We could be starting the year off in, in worse shape than we did this year, so. That's my report. I'm glad to have, answer any questions if anybody has any.
Nathan, what are we at at percent of normal? That's kind of one of the things that we are used to talking about here. What is cat, what is the, the Bear River drainage as far as percent of normal right now?
For, for the, for the water year, percent of normal?
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're pretty close to the statewide average, the seventy to seventy-five percent. It's, it's pretty close. Southern Utah, actually, with all the rain they got from Cedar City South, some of their reservoirs went from, you know, fifteen, twenty percent, now they're up in the seventy, eighty percent. So all that moisture as a whole makes the state look a little better than we probably really are with that seventy-five percent. So we're, you know, I think Hyrum Reservoir's at about fifteen percent, Porcupine's about ten percent. Newton Reservoir's pretty well just run through.
I can remember last fall, because I was trying to plant some fall wheat and there was absolutely no, no moisture from August on down through
Yeah.
until around November. And never was able to plant. Well, this year it's totally different. We've had a lot of moisture.
Yeah. And that's what's, that's what's helped that soil moisture number come up really good, because that, that saturated, you know, the, the, top five feet essentially is kind of where they measure that with their sensors up in the canyon. And the mountains received more water than we did here in the valley, and so that's really what, what helped us. So it set us up for a great year if the snow will now come on top of that. But if the snow doesn't come, that soil moisture will be on, because all those, all, all the evergreen trees, they can, they can sit, continue to evaporate water all winter long, and so they'll, they'll, they'll just suck that out if we don't get more on top of it.
Perfect picture to look at is to just go drive Sardine right now and see how beautiful the fall colors are with that, all that moisture that came in the fall. It puts some moisture into those leaves. They're just becoming very beautiful right now. I came through Sunday and, and it's beautiful.
Yeah, the upper mountains, I've been up on a few hikes the last few weeks, and yeah, that, it's, it's, the grass is green, you know, things look good. So we've set ourselves up. Luckily, Mother Nature's helping us out. We just need six more months of it.
We're gonna have a really good snow year, Nathan, and make life good.
Hope, I hope it's about a hundred and fifty percent of normal. We don't want to go too high, 'cause
I don't wanna.
Then we'll be talking about floods next spring and how we deal with that, but a hundred and fifty percent year would be great for us.
I don't want to be greedy. If we can just get a hundred percent of normal, we'll be fine.
Nathan, is there something we should be doing?
Help, helping us get funding for reservoirs. I mean, really, long-term, it, it, you know, with, with climate change, one way or another, reservoir storage is your only backup plan long-term. I mean, we need to change development standards. We need to look at things differently. We don't need grass everywhere we have it. We need less, less grass in lawns and stuff. But if you don't have water to store and manage, it doesn't matter what you've done development-wise to change how we're using water in the valleys. Where we rely on groundwater and springs for our water supply, we've got to make some major changes down the road.
Is there, is there an opportunity to do more cloud seeding?
We're, we're looking at that. So we're working with the state. There isn't so much here, but upper, up, upper Bear River watershed in Wyoming, there, there potentially is, and so we're looking at how we can expand that up there. And so we're working with the state and the contractor that does that for us to look at that option of doing that up there.
Has the county ever participated in that program?
They, they did that program. Well, originally, it was the Soil Conservation Districts, and then it went to the county for a few decades, probably. And then just recently, it transferred to the Water District where we, we got up and running. So yeah, the county has participated in it. And you still do, I guess. I mean, the, the taxpayers, the valley still pay for a portion of that, so you're still participating.
But you, you have to have a storm to make.
Yeah, yeah, you need, you need the good storms to make it work. I, I think the last, well, yeah, the last two winters, we haven't spent what we contracted up to, because there wasn't enough storms to run the generators that many hours. And so, yeah, you need the, the right weather conditions to make that happen, for sure.
Nathan, there is, we really do need to look other places than to Jeff Barnes' rain dance.
That's why I thought he, that's why I thought he'd do so good.
No, he is good.
So one thing, I took out the park strip, side yard and everything a year ago, and I think I looked down at one of the water districts in, in Salt Lake that had plans to do that. Is there something we can do up here to maybe encourage that?
A couple of districts have started that flip-the-strip program, they call it. It's really expensive. And, and our budget is super small, so unless you want me to raise taxes,
Nope.
then we're not gonna have programs like that in the near future. I think down the ri, road, we'll have a, a better conservation program and do a lot more like some of those bigger districts do, but right now, we're just not to the capacity to do it. The state is looking at funding that statewide because of, of this year. The governor is very conservation-minded after this year, and so I think we may get some funding for that coming from the state level, and then we would sponsor those type of programs. But really, long-term, we're way better off money spent working with cities and, and the county on development standards of not requiring grass in certain areas, reducing the green space requirements, and actually incentivizing reducing those areas. You know, there's, there's, I don't know how many thousands or hundreds of acres, probably at least, maybe thousands of what, what the state now is, you'll hear the governor say it, non-essential grass. That takes a lot of water. And, 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 and we kind of struggle here because each city has its own water system. And, and some of them have a really great supply, and so even on a year like this, they didn't need to push the message of conservation because, you know, they weren't limited. But cities that did push it, so Salt Lake County, they, you know, there's a Salt Lake Metro Water District. They really pushed their message and they saved one-point-eight billion gallons of water this year over last year, and this was a hotter, drier year. You know, that's fifty, five-hundred acre-feet of water they were able to save just by messaging, we need to reduce water usage. No one's lawn died. Everyone's lawn will be, it's probably green now with the fall rain, even if they haven't watered it, and so we've got to figure out how to do a better county-wide job of, of collaborating all the cities and the county together on, on changing how we grow and how we use water.
I, I just want to add one thing. USU Extension, they're here, they have a free water check program. They'll come to your house, check your sprinklers, tell you if you're watering too much at the right times. I had them come this summer and look at my lawn. I'm, I'm spending fifty dollars less per month on my water. I didn't realize I was watering too much. I, I thought I was already putting minimal water on the lawn and it was too much. It was more, it, it's no less green now than it was before.
And so we, yeah, we, we contract with them to do those water checks, because that's a lot easier than me trying to do those. And so, yeah, we hope to expand that. And we have, this is our third year of doing that program with them. And it, it gets a few more every year, but yeah, it's, it's a good way to let people know you can reduce your use.
I'm saving fifty dollars a month on my water bill.
I think last year, we had one that, that was saved about six hundred. I mean, they had a few acres. They had a big lot, but they were able to save a lot of money.
Okay, well, Nathan, thank you so much for that update. I'm glad to hear there is a little bit of good news.
A little bit. We just need snow.
A little bit. Give us some hope.
Okay, thank you.
So much for being here. Okay, we'll move to item six C. This is a request for modification of a RAPS project from the Cache Valley Center for the Arts, and we have their executive director, our good friend Wendy Hassan. Just so the council's aware, that we awarded ninety thousand dollars this year to the Cache Valley Center for the Arts, and they haven't requested payment of this amount at all, and the council can consider changing what it's for. With that, Wendy?
Thank you so much. I'm gonna stay right on topic, apparently. And I'm very glad to hear that we have a little good news on the horizon. So we do have a prioritized list of facility needs and capital projects, and the restaurant tax is so wonderful in helping us take care of those and keep rental rates affordable and ticket prices affordable for our community, and we're so grateful for that. But something has come up, and we have spent some of the ninety, but I just haven't turned in receipts for it. You'll be getting those. But a, a project has come up and suddenly come to the very top of my to-do list, and it's right along the lines of what we're talking about. I don't know how many people realize that the theater, that forty-foot box actually utilizes a marvelous cooling system where we divert cold canal water, cool the air around it, and then just blow it into that space, and that is our sole source of cooling in the summertime. And it's pretty remarkable. It's really inexpensive, but it does rely on that water when it enters being cool and being plentiful. And this summer, we had a bit of a wake-up call right before Mozart Requiem. The water coming in was eighty-one degrees. That's not gonna help me cool my box at all, so we had some real initiatives, opening doors at night, keeping it open all night, trying to blow stuff around, putting ice at the intake to try to help that. That ended up being a controls issue, not the coolness of the water, but But we are going to lose the access we have to that water where it is because of development to the south. They've been very kind to us, keeping us involved in the conversation. Logan City has been very aware of our needs. But what they're going to do when they divert that canal is pipe us out to it. And if that pipes us far enough that it warms up before it gets to us, that doesn't help. If the water level drops to the point where there's not enough flow, that doesn't help. If the water warms up, that doesn't help. And if spring and fall temperatures continue to be hot, we actually don't have access to that canal water at that time, or if the water is shut off early. Now, when this system was implemented in nineteen ninety-three, they knew that there might be interruption to that source. So we do have a workaround. The workaround is culinary water. And where our canal water use is non-consumptive, and that's still good for watering crops, if we pull culinary over, it's no longer useful for that. Terribly expensive and not a very environmentally friendly solution. So we've seen the writing on the wall. It came upon us suddenly and unexpectedly. And I need to put chillers in so that we have a backup plan. And it may become our primary plan in the future if things continue to move this direction. Given construction schedules and the scarcity of HVAC equipment, in order to have something in place for our first fully scheduled summer season in three years, I need to do it now. So what I would like to do is allow this project to be included in our portfolio of RAPS projects. We estimate, and we've spoken with the mechanical engineers who designed our system, we anticipate the project will be about two hundred thousand dollars. And so I will be conducting extensive fundraising. But I need to design it now in order to get on the waiting lists for the equipment that I'm going to need in the summer.
So you'd like to take the remaining amount?
I would like the ability to use any of that amount remaining for that now top-of-my-priority-list project. And again, I've spent some of it. I will be very careful not to overspend it. But I would just like the flexibility to include that in the portfolio.
Okay, council, do you have any questions or entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to allow that modification for the RAPS funding to be used for that cooling system that's necessary.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to allow the Cache Valley Center for the Arts to modify their RAPS project to allow for coolers. Is there any further discussion?
I have some questions.
Okay, Gordy.
Whenever you pipe canal water, there's a huge amount of savings. If you don't really understand that, when they pipe the canal, you know, above Logan all the way down that goes to North Logan, it was almost a fifty percent savings. So when you start to say that the water's going to go away, I'm to tell you that the water will be cooler and there'll be more of it. And so I'm really not sure if the information you're being told is correct.
Okay.
But, you know, I'm pretty sure that the water will still be there, and it'll even be cooler, because it won't be exposed to the sun if it goes in the pipes. And you can poke a hole in a pipe and get water back. So I'm wondering if we're panicking before we really need to. But I don't have any understanding of what you're saying and why they're saying and telling you this. But whenever you start to pipe canals and you start taking the water and putting it in a pipe underground, it'll actually be cooler and there'll be more of it. And that kind of doesn't add up to what you're telling us. But until we're able to get somebody that really knows what they're talking about to really look into that, I think we're really jumping to places that we don't quite understand yet.
Well, let me provide a couple of quick clarifications. So there's two issues. The canal that's being diverted is not, at this point, I believe, planned to be pressurized and covered. It's going to remain an open canal. But the cost of piping to where it's going is looking to be so prohibitive that they were going to include keeping us whole in the project. What I'm going to ask is that if it's actually going to be that expensive to divert that far, maybe we could use some of that to give us this backup plan, because we still have the problem of fall and spring being so hot and of our only backup being that culinary. We had some concerns this year about some of the early termination of flow. And if I have shows in August and September that don't have access to that water, because, and now with piping and covering, that may provide savings. But I don't know when that is actually planned for. It's been articulated. But it's one of the factors of many that we're concerned about in order to maintain that use. I don't know if our system will be compatible with a piped and pressurized system. What I'd actually like to do is retain the ability to do both. But then when I have to go to a backup plan, not doing the culinary water, but having the option. Then I can keep the green and economical solution, too. Because the other piece of this that makes me very unhappy about moving forward is that it'll raise our electricity costs by about a hundred dollars a day in the summer. And that is going to have an impact on ongoing, I really don't like to increase our ongoing costs. So there are multiple factors. The piping and covering of the canal is only one of them. If it means we get more, that would help my solution of having both. But in the years of construction between now and then, I'm concerned about having anything in place in time for next year and certainly don't want to rely on the culinary option. Does that help clarify, Gordon?
Well, not really, because I'm pretty sure that the canal company will have to use the same right of way that they've got now. They can't change it, because where are they, you know, where are they going to move it that isn't going to impact property rights of other people? So I'm pretty sure they're going to have to stay within their own right of ways. And, you know, there are just so many questions banks around in my mind, because I've been involved in these projects. You know, I'm a farmer, and so I see these things happening all the time. And I said that there's a great savings. And Dave Erickson piped up, and he said, "There's a hundred percent savings of water by putting it in a pipe from up at Logan Canyon and taking it to North Logan. Hundred percent savings."
Wow.
So that's why they can run the canal into North Logan at the high capacity and still send the water down to the power plant there at Logan. And so I'm, I'm, I don't even understand what's going on here.
Wendy?
Yes.
If the water isn't there, it doesn't work.
Yes.
And so that's the problem, is you get such low flows or, you know, it just can't be used in drought year. You have no alternative.
Precisely.
It's allowing you an alternative.
Exactly. And it would be my preference to retain it. Approving my ability to use the money towards it doesn't mean I'm committed to moving that direction. If we find we're able to keep it, I'm just not optimistic. And it's been finicky enough in the past, unaffected shoulder season shows enough, to make me nervous about it as a long-term continuing sole solution. I'm sorry, Paul, I think you were going to say something.
And this isn't a complete replacement either. This, as you said, is just a.
It's an alternative, so that I'm not sweating like a hog going to watch the show.
Which we have seen, and we don't want to do that to people. They've been so good to us so far. We want to make sure you're comfortable. Thank you.
Yes. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. You guys ready to vote on the motion?
What was that?
Are you ready to vote on the motion? Okay. All right, so all in favor of the motion to allow them to modify their project use toward the chillers? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye abstain.
And one abstention.
Okay, so the motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we will move now to item number seven, the 2021 Cache County Fair and Rodeo Report. We welcome Lane Parker and Lamont Poulsen, our fair managers.
The questions will be gone.
The questions will be gone? Well, how are you all doing? I've learned something tonight, Madam Chair. I'll do that instead of calling you Gina. Anyhow, I'm a little country. But I appreciate being here tonight and the invite. And hopefully, a few things on the report I get out. Number one is I just want to express my appreciation to the council, the executive, the support that we have received there, working with Lane, it's over the fair. My role is the rodeo. We had an excellent rodeo again. Last year, we went against the odds of the world and pulled it off. And I wondered then, you know, we had a lot of support from across the nation, because we were one of the few that had it. And then I wondered if we'd fall back, you know? And it proved out that they did respect that and come. Just a few numbers. You know, I went to the executive and we added the women's breakaway roping. And that was a good move. I think the people really liked it. The contestants were very respectable and thankful. And to give you an idea, I think we had a hundred and twenty-four breakaway ropers here and all the number ones. And so it was interesting, because with that amount and along with all the other events, if I can explain this so you understand it, and Lane, you correct me, or Scott's here. I appreciate him being here with us, because some of the terms we use are not understandable. So when I talk about slack, that is the amount of contestants that we have that we can't fit in to our rodeo. And that's in the timed events normally, because we limit our rough stock. Rough stock is your saddle bronc, your barebacks, and your bulls. So we keep those in the event. So this year, our slack was three times what it normally is. So we spent six hours Thursday morning doing rodeo. So Thursday had nine hours of rodeo, which is, you know, like two more full days. Our extreme broncs on Wednesday night is improving. And the people are, we're creatures of habit. And this new day, they just have the Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And so after, you hear a lot about, "I wish I'd have known, I'd have been there." Because we also implemented the women's barrel racing and the breakaway roping into that extreme bronx. So that helped us to accommodate those. I was going to bring, I can't remember, but we probably had, well, in five hundred contestants here over the four days. So with that, our events sold out Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. The one challenge, which we are going to address. So because of that, there were some things that we're accustomed to having happen, like the vouchers for sponsors. But when the tickets are all gone, there's none for a voucher to fill. So we've got to just be a little better at that and then have them get those a little quicker. And we're going to work on that. Couple things I want to also, Thursday night, I appreciate it. When our county executive brought up the Thursday night, all of us have connections with the suicide awareness. And what's happened with this coming up? And so we were approached and we changed in our Thursday night, which has always been a family night at the rodeo. We shifted to a suicide awareness night. And so we interjected a lot of information during that. And I think that that was received well, and people involved there enjoyed and appreciated it, because we're all affected by it. So everything we can do is good. Where we're selling out, you'll hear from me later on that. But Bart and I have looked at some things of change in our grandstands, you know, on the west side. And executive, we've talked about that, and see what we could do there. And so I know that there's some plans there. I appreciate that. One other thing that I'm going to bring up is, on our scoreboard, that's been a highlight. Everybody likes the big screen and the replays. And as we looked at, and I'm meeting with those guys again, it probably would be advantageous for us and good for the community if we would double those, so we have one on each side, so that the entire group there can see. And I looked at a few rodeos where a smaller one was erected. But when Bart and I started looking that over, if we go up to the full size, there was only like fifteen hundred dollars difference in having two full screens on each side. And I would recommend that's what we do. So that kind of tells us where we're at. So financially, it was a success again. Any questions?
Good job.
It was a good show. I went to it. The fair was excellent.
Okay, thank you.
Really fun, Lamont. And I went to the Days of Forty-Seven Rodeo, and I didn't think it was any better than our rodeo.
Yeah.
Our rodeo was stellar, so nice job.
Our payout, I wrote this down, and if you want bragging rights, and I guess we as a county are entitled to it. We go back a few years, so I'll be a little careful there. But our payout on the contestants this year was a hundred thousand dollars more than the original budget that we had when we started. We paid out over a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars to the contestants, which includes our added money from the county and their entry fees. And for bragging rights and putting in a paper, that's higher than Preston and Box Elder.
Just kind of mentioned that, yeah. Let her bring that up. Well, I really appreciate everybody that, on the council. And I think the thing that, for me, the thing that makes the fair what it is and the success that it is, is just everybody that's involved. And everybody here on the council, and as you look in the back row here, almost every one of them was involved at multiple days, if not, and way in advance of the rodeo and the fair. I've got, you know, my committee book here, and I'm just looking down this main sheet. There's thirty-six names on here that are just chairmans. And so under them, there's, you know, a half a dozen or more people on their committees that have helped make it happen. So I just can't say enough about all those who want to be involved in the fair. And as I go down here and look at these chairmans, and you know what? They're all, you know, on my phone, most of them speed dial. And they're just, they're fanatical about their department. And at times, it's like, oh, come on, let's look at the whole fair. But I've got this problem over here. And it's fantastic, really, to have that problem, that they love their department. They're willing to, you know, go to all ends to make their department work. And that's what, but in the end, I mean, we're, you know, I was going to say, I didn't have anybody who says, "Well, I'm not going to do this anymore. You know, I don't like what you did," or something. They've all been super supportive along the way. So I just want to make that mention. You know, there's, again, a lot of the people on the county, in the finance office and tech and that, that, you know, there was a lot of last-minute things that really stepped up to make it successful. And so, again, I just really appreciate that. And so just a couple of the highlights. Of course, you know, we'll brag a little bit, on the junior livestock auction. You know, we went ahead last year when other fairs, you know, didn't have their livestock auction or tried to amend it. And we went ahead with ours, and we had a fabulous year. Last year, we came up with, you know, well, give you 2019, their gross dollars was five hundred and forty-six thousand. And that was, you know, I mean, we hadn't had a year like that. That's the boost and everything that was involved in the auction. And then in 2020 was five hundred and fifty-three thousand. And we were just, wow, you know, with COVID and everything that went into it, to have that kind of response. And so we were just, you know, hoping that we could come up with that figure again or close to it. And we came in at seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, almost ninety-three thousand. I mean, just, you know, the community stepped up. Businesses that maybe were there before or other years, and they just came in and they sat on the seats the whole time and just super supported it. And consequently, you know, we've got a lot more youth. We had, Dave, you tell me, I think there was sixty-two more animals than last year?
Five hundred and forty-seven animals, I believe, it sold.
Yeah, yeah, I've got that number here. I'll look for it. So, yeah, we had more youth coming into the program. And then when they see that success, there were some years there where, you know, it cost them thirteen, fourteen hundred dollars to raise a steer, and they got. cost them $1,300, $1,400 to raise a steer, and they got $1,400 for him. You know, and now we're talking, you know, $3,000 as an average for those steers. And so there's an opportunity for those kids, and I think most of those dollars, when you look at that, that 792,000, that's going to the college funds and mission funds, some really great things that goes into the lives of those young men and young women. So, you know, that's really why I got involved in the fair and have been, for, you know, raising my kids and enjoyed all those aspects of the fair. There's, you know, another side of it, that, you know, the rodeo in Lamont, I can't say enough good about what happens over there, and the numbers all prove that out as well. But there's a lot of people who love the carnival, and we didn't have the carnival last year, and so there was a lot of us says, well, you know, if they didn't show up this year, it'd be okay. Says, well, what do you want to do with the $50,000 we don't get from that? Oh, well, wait a minute. I guess if that's prize money and that goes back into the kitty somewhere. So, and when I say that, that number is, that's, you know, we had a lot of vendors that didn't come last year because it wasn't a carnival, and we didn't have the big entertainment. And so it was way different. Anyway, in 2019, the carnival, our check at the end that we draw from the carnival itself was $41,000, and this year it was $52,000. So yeah, the carnival was better, they had more online sales. We're gonna develop that a lot better now that they can sell tickets online. We were kind of late in getting that information from them, because we were only the second carnival they did for the year that actually sold tickets online. So they were still experimenting when they got to us. But we have a really good relationship with Brown's Amusement. They are one of the premier, certainly in the western states, they are the premier carnival, so we'll work with them again. But we did come up on the end of our five-year contract, so... And I've, again, I got Sherry and Danny on my speed dial, so we talk quite regularly, but we'll be coming with a... Some kind of a contract amending things, because now we do so much online, and Dave will be getting with you, you know, how we decide that, what that really looks like. And Bart wants to be part of that, as far as their parking and how we give them space and things like that, is all part of the deal. But that was, again, another great success, and that, you know, there's a lot of the valley, especially close to the center of town, that that's the fair to them, is going to the carnival. So something we don't want to lose. Another thing that we changed up this year on the Monday night, we had had... We'd spread things out because we moved the road... Or had a day of rodeo. We changed up an evening horse event, which was raining, and we had about 35 contestants normally on that Monday night, or previously the Wednesday night, and we changed it up and we had a more of a cowboy rodeo event called Team Doctoring. And we ended up with 160 teams, and we went till 1:30 in the morning. So we gotta change that. But it was a little like it was slack, you know, it was a little too successful. We gotta change some things. So, you know, just acts like that that really were a super part of the whole thing. I know we came in under budget, and I have to have Betty sit down and explain to me what... Where everything went, but we did come in under budget. But there's some things that we definitely need to work on next year. And obviously, because of, you know, the growth, is how do we deal with that growth, and a lot of it's parking. I did have a drone lined up that he was gonna video actually several evenings when we have the parking lots full and that. And if you can believe it, FAA came in and said, no, you can't fly your drone. And I'm not sure what that deal was, but it says they have to get a permit to fly over public, and they wouldn't give them the permit. So I didn't get any of those pictures, but we gotta work on that. And it's not an easy fix. So I think that kind of is, in a nutshell, my report. If there's any input or comments or that we can, you know, directly answer here or just put on the agenda for next year.
Counsel, if I could just mention, I... This is my first year working with these gentlemen on the fair and rodeo, and I just want to thank Lane and Lamont. They were outstanding, professional, hardworking, they knew their stuff, and they put on an event we can be proud of. So thank you very much, both of you. And I also want to thank our staff, we have our fair ground staff who work so hard to make these great events, and the committee, which some of you are on our committee, too. Thank you all for your help.
It was a great event. Thank you, Lane, and thank you, Lamont. Appreciate it very much.
Lamont, I sent you a text, I wanted Scott to say something.
I showed it to him.
No, no.
Lamont, you and Lane are in hopes that we have you again next year. Are we...
I don't think you can run him off. I mean, I'm okay, so.
I guess when you retire, Scott takes your place, right, Lamont?
I guess, I haven't...
I don't know. I guess it happens.
Well, don't think about it. You just stay.
Too much. I don't know. What is that? Never heard of it. Thanks to all of you.
You bet. Thanks for you.
Okay, we'll move to item 7B. J.D. Gunnel, USU Extension Agent, and he's gonna tell us a report of USU Extension. Thanks, J.D., for being here.
Well, as introduction, my name's J.D. Gunnel. I'm originally from the Valley, but been gone almost 20 years, so it's nice to be back. I've worked for USU Extension for 16 years, and as part of that, I've been in Salt Lake County and Davis County, and hands down, this is my favorite county. A little bit biased, but it's the truth. Before you, you should have a handout of our Community Impact Report. We also have some in front of Jess Bradfield, if anybody in the audience would like a copy. This has a lot of the details of our different program areas that we provide to the county, but I also have a short PowerPoint, because I wouldn't be a professor if I didn't have one. But it's gonna be the Cliff Notes version. What I like to tell people is, I'm a professor with the university, but I'm a professor for the people. And so a lot of the history of extension goes clear back to Abraham Lincoln and signing the Land Grant University Act, and Utah State is the best Utah... Is the best college in Utah. And so we focus on a lot of mechanical arts and agriculture, and thus being, I run the statewide Master Gardener Program, as well as the one in Cache County. This last year, we had to move our training online because of COVID. Typically, we run about 30 to 35 participants through the program. This last year, we had 80. And because of that, we were really busy. You can see some of the statistics. We consistently get over 70% graduating, which means if someone takes the Master Gardener course, we expect them to donate 40 hours of time back to the community. And part of that, we have the Bridger Park Community Garden, collaboration with Logan City. We have... We had 50 raised garden beds where the community can come and rent and use them. We got a $4,000 donation this last year, and we were able to build 20 more. And so it's been a really fun project to watch grow. It's very well utilized in our community. Because of our roles with the university, we also have to publish and do a lot of grant writing. So part of this presentation today is kind of a return on investment that the county gives us. Our budget is just over $200,000 for support staff and support of our programs. And in this impact report, you can see that because of our positions at the university and different collaborations and partnerships, we were able to garner over $2 million and bring that back into community programming. With agriculture, Cache County is second to none. We rank among the top five in any category you can think of with regard to crops or animals. Many of you are very keenly aware of agriculture and the roots that we have in our community. We have Jake Hadfield, who's our current agricultural agent. He's done a lot of succession planning, working with our seasoned agriculture clientele that are in need of passing those assets down to their posterity. And so he's been really busy helping 13 different families this year, which constitutes thousands of acres of agriculture, keeping them in green belt status. And if I'm correct, the assets equaled over $15 million. And so...